Good evening, everyone. It is March 24th, 2025. It's 5:31 PM. I am Mayor Shelley Carlson. The Morehead City Council welcomes public input on issues listed on the agenda of general community interest, time and council permitting. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you would like to address the council during the meeting, you'll need to fill out a form provided by the city clerk, and we will call you up during the Citizens to Address Council item on the agenda. You will need to state your name, and if you are a Morehead resident. If comments were submitted to the clerk prior to the meeting via email or phone, those comments will be entered into the record. For more information on participation, please visit the council meetings page on the City of Morehead website at moreheadmn.gov. We, the Morehead City Council collectively with gratitude acknowledge the sacred land the City of Morehead is built upon. We acknowledge the people have resided here for generations and recognize that the spirit of the Dakota, Je'bu, Mati, and all Indigenous communities permeates this land. That, could I get a roll call, please?
Ryan Nelson.
Here.
Nicole Mattson.
Here.
Heather Niesemeyer.
Here.
Emily Moore. Deb White.
Here.
Lisa Borgan. Sebastian McDougall. I think he was just connecting. Chuck Hendrickson.
Here.
Mayor Shelley Carlson.
Here, and for those who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, and with that, do we have any agenda amendments?
Yes, Mayor, we have one, the addition of an item 13D, which is a resolution to approve the title and summary for the ordinance that is listed 2025-02. This is, yeah, the title and summary, which requires seven votes to record.
Okay.
The ordinance, which would be approved by resolution.
Okay, and with that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda amendment?
So move, Niesemeyer.
A second.
Second, Nelson.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seen none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right. That motion carries. Oh, that's right, okay, roll call, please.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mattson.
Yes.
Niesemeyer.
Yes.
Moore. White.
Yes.
McDougall. Hendrickson.
Yes.
All right, and that motion carries. And is, sorry, I've got a hair in my face. Sebastian is not on. I see two attendings, but Sebastian's not on yet.
Yeah, and then we'll need his vote on this.
For the agenda amendment, okay, all right.
For the consent agenda.
So for both? Do you need a, do you, we need seven votes for the agenda amendment as well? Okay.
No, just for the consent agenda.
Okay. So with the agenda amendment, though, that did carry. That motion passed, okay, all right. We will wait for the consent agenda. Oh, I believe he's on.
Move to approve consent agenda?
A second.
A second, Mattson.
A motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seen none, roll call vote, please.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mattson.
Yes.
Niesemeyer.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
McDougall.
Yes.
Hendrickson.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Moving on to recognitions and presentations, our presentation tonight is from the FM Coalition to End Homelessness, and I will turn it over to Ms. Chandler Esslinger, the Executive Director, and Taylor Severson from the United Way. Thanks for being here tonight.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and council members, both in person and virtually. We appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening and share an update about the collaborative efforts of the FM Coalition to End Homelessness alongside the United Way of Cass Clay. My name is Chandler Esslinger, and I am the Executive Director of the Coalition, and I would love to just share some updates about the work that we've been doing. So, in partnership with the United Way, you know, the Coalition's mission has always been that we work in partnership to achieve permanent solutions to prevent and end homelessness in our region. And as this community issue has continued to grow, we know that it requires consistent, intentional leadership, thought leadership, coordination of services, and a variety of buy-in from our different stakeholder groups. So we wanted to update you all with some of the progress that we've made so far on that collaborative effort, and a little bit about just the state of homelessness in our community overall. So just to ground us in some shared definitions, when we think about homelessness, it really means that we're talking about people in our community who lack a fixed, regular nighttime residence. And that can, that actually includes a variety of different folks. People who are staying in shelter, or some sort of transitional, non-permanent housing situation, people who are living in an unstable, maybe doubled-up situation, forced to stay with a family member because they have no other place to stay. We also know that this means that we have some unsheltered folks in our community as well. And so that definition of homelessness, depending on the population that we're talking about, includes a lot of different types of situations. So here in the Fargo-Morehead area, on average, we have about 1,050 people on any night who are experiencing homelessness. And we also know, based on data collected from our homeless liaisons in the different school districts, that we also have about 600 students in our community who are experiencing homelessness. You may have heard that nationally homelessness has been on the rise in recent years. One of the data points that we point to, that we use to kind of determine the increase or decrease in homelessness over time is called the point in time count. It happens nationally, one night every year, and that can really help us understand, are we seeing an increase in homelessness over time, or are we seeing a sustained and systematic reduction? And what we know at the national level is that overall, there's been an 18% increase in homelessness in the United States, and locally, we see some of those trends as well. Compared to 2023, we have seen about a 5% increase in homelessness in our region. Now, that 1,050 individuals, again, is an estimation on any given night, that does not necessarily represent, in a given year, the number of households, individuals, youth, or families who are entering and exiting out of homelessness. So that's just one number that we use to kind of understand, and it just helps us quantify the number of people who are in an unstable living situation on any given night. So when we think about all of the diversity of situations that people find themselves in, where they might lack that regular, fixed place to sleep at night, we actually have a really incredible continuum of service providers who support all different parts of what we call the homelessness response system. A lot of times, when we think about shelter, excuse me, when we think about homelessness, our mind will immediately go to emergency shelter, and shelter is a crucial intervention in our community that addresses that immediate crisis of homelessness. And we also know that there is a network of service providers that both work to prevent and end homelessness, that outreach to individuals who are currently experiencing homelessness, that provide supportive services to help people move out of that situation, and then also help folks maintain stability long-term. So you can see, there's kind of a wheel up on the screen here that shows all of the different sections that make up the homelessness response system. Some organizations exist in all five parts of that wheel, others have kind of a niche population, or a niche focus area, depending on what they specialize in and the expertise that they have. But all together, all of those different wheels of the system make up what we call the homelessness response system. So it's really important for us to understand, as we think about what it means to collaborate, what it means to work towards solutions to prevent and end homelessness, making homelessness rare, brief, and one-time, that we understand there is a collective of agencies across the community who are working in partnership to achieve that goal. Now, some of the things that we know about our homelessness response system is that because we're seeing that systematic, that increase in homelessness over time, that we are not able to sufficiently meet the needs of everybody who is experiencing that housing crisis in our community. And so when we unpack that wheel, and we think about how, what it takes for a system to be in an optimal state, we know that there are certain parts of our system that are currently overburdened, that are currently taking the brunt of most of our homelessness crisis in the community, and then there are other parts of our system that do really incredible work to help prevent and kind of end that crisis, but they're under-resourced in our community. And so our outreach and coordinated entry system, kind of the inflow into homelessness, is something that we're really good at. We're really good at figuring out who in our community is experiencing homelessness, who is in crisis, but what we don't always have the resources to do is help someone quickly navigate and end that, that experience. And that's where we tend to see, again, that overutilization of emergency shelter. When we think about what it takes to bring this system into an optimal state, where we are preventing homelessness for as many people as possible, and moving as many families and households into permanent housing, we really need to balance out these different columns to ensure that the whole system is meeting that need. And so the optimal state of what we're seeking is to ensure that no part of that system is overburdened, and that we are moving families and individuals quickly through that housing crisis and into a more permanent situation. And that means sections of that wheel, the agencies that make up that part of the system are able to scale up their efforts to meet demand, and we have less burden on those emergency crisis-driven services in our community. And this dashboard up here kind of shows what that optimal state would look like. I'm going to turn things over to Taylor to talk a little bit more about the work that we're doing to optimize that system, both in the short term with some emergent needs in our community, and also some more longer-term strategy to sustain that optimum state.
Thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit more. Again, my name is Taylor Severson. I serve as the Director of Community Impact with United Way of Cass Clay. And our, our partnership is really unique because it takes this focus of the work it's going to take to address this cross-border issue. It is certainly not one city, one organization's opportunity or responsibility to address alone. It's going to take this multi-sector and multi-jurisdictional approach to truly address homelessness in our community. And our organizations serve a really critical, critical role in serving as that backbone infrastructure to bringing along those really critical service providers and the other sectors that cooperate and intersect with individuals experiencing homelessness. And so our initiative is very focused on this regional, cross-sector approach. We have learned over the past couple of years that our community is very engaged in this, in this community challenge as well, and one of the things that we've been hearing from business leaders, from service providers, from the public, is that this issue needs coordination, strategy, and collaboration to truly have an impact on what we're seeing in that increase in homelessness across our community. And so we've identified that there are absolutely some critical, short-term needs that our community needs to address in order to keep that system from becoming further destabilized. These short-term solutions are things that our community needs to address right now as winter programming starts to come to an end. I know it feels like spring today, but there are many programs that will exist across our region through April, and as those temporary programs end, we will, if we do nothing, see an increase in unsheltered homelessness of about 55 to 65 individuals entering homelessness without the adequate services, or services who have the capacity to serve them appropriately. And so this is one of the things that we're focused on right now. This is our, our role and responsibility to address that potential for unsheltered homelessness, an increase in that unsheltered homelessness as we get to the end of winter. We also know that if we do nothing, based on the trends across our, our nation, that homelessness will likely continue to rise across our community in the coming years. And so we also need a community strategy that is comprehensive and cross-jurisdictional, and this is our opportunity, this initiative's opportunity, to develop a long-term, comprehensive plan to address homelessness. This will allow us to integrate both those service providers that are really critical in this work, who have that subject matter expertise in serving people, and those cooperating or intersecting organizations to create a planning framework that will allow us to address challenges in the way that are very unique to our region. We know that folks don't simply live in one city and, and use services in one city or another, but instead are leveraging the incredible resources across our community. And so it's going to take this regional, regional approach. Through these efforts, this long-term, comprehensive strategy, and those short-term solutions that are going to help us address our community's crisis right now, we expect to see a sustained and systematic reduction in homelessness. That is our goal. We know we cannot achieve that with, with one single action or one year of programming, but instead will be this cumulative effect of these resources working in alignment with one another. As a result of this, or as a, in a, in an effort to coordinate this work, our organization serving as that backbone infrastructure to help lead people together and bring accountability to this work and unified messaging, we have brought together a steering committee of 15 service providers who work across our region, who are focused on serving people experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. Those service providers on that steering committee have been our, our source of securing some of those effective solutions for that short-term action that we're working towards. We also know that it's really critical to bring other folks along and to make space for others, and so through a regional planning process, we will also be engaging about 45 additional stakeholders through a regional council process. And we're excited to start to announce more of that process in the coming weeks and share more about what that, what that structure will look like right now, as well as for the, for the future. To effectively do this work, we need both human capital and the, the, the brain power of folks who are providing that subject matter expertise, as well as financial resources. And we are well on our way to securing this initial investment of $2.5 million to support those short-term strategies for about 12 to 18 months. And through this tiered approach, making sure that we are bringing service providers closest to this work first, those with subject matter expertise, and then engaging those other organizations, civic leaders, business leaders, and cooperating sectors to help us build this work long-term, that we're taking a really strategic and targeted approach to addressing our community's challenges.
So, as we work to achieve solutions, both for the short-term needs of our community, that potential increase in unsheltered homelessness, if we kind of status quo, do not intervene, and also lay the foundation for that more comprehensive approach that is required to see that sustained and systematic reduction over time, that's the work that we're doing right now. And so getting this crucial, kind of, initial group of stakeholders and steering committee members together helps us lay the foundation for that longer-term strategy. And we are so pleased at the amount of engagement and support that we have received across the system in all five of those sectors in that wheel that I shared earlier, who are invested in seeing that, that, that integrated approach, that intentional strategy development to ensure that we are all seeing the data-driven decreases over time. So our vision for United to End Homelessness, the partnership between United Way and the Coalition, is that we endeavor to create a community where homelessness is prevented whenever possible, or, or brief, and that everyone has access to the programs and services they need to thrive. So that is a really short, very quick overview of a really complicated system and complex plan. We would love to answer any questions, kind of respecting your thoughts and feedback on this, and we will continue to be engaging both the City of Morehead and Clay County in this process as well, but wanted to give you at least a little bit of, of an overview on the work that we're doing right now and what we hope to achieve in the future.
Thank you so much, Chandler and Taylor. I know that, I don't even know how many meetings that we've had, or that I've had with you guys since last October, I think, or even probably September, and I just want to thank you guys for sitting down with us, learning how the City of Morehead is structurally set up, and how they are different than the City of Fargo. You know, it's, you know, we talked a lot about how Fargo-Cass Public Health is the City of Fargo and the county, and on the Minnesota side, the City of Morehead doesn't have a public health department. We don't, and we used to have housing, but that has combined with the county, so we don't have the departments, or the staff, or the resources in the city structure to be able to provide those services that they do in the Fargo side. But what we do is that when our law enforcement, in particular, get calls, we don't usually send a police officer out. It's likely going to be maybe a cadet, but it's our public works folks who are putting, you know, the signs out, that they're the ones working with them, and then we make the referrals to CAP LP, and they have somebody who really goes out and works with the individuals who are unhoused that we find in our community. And then we have that community navigator position within the law enforcement agency in order to help folks find the services. So I know that that took, you know, some conversations, and then how, how can we support and assist with the city when we don't have those departments or those people in our city? And it's really the county that has those services and those people, and also the funding. So just really appreciate you providing an opportunity for the city to provide that education, not just for smaller groups, but also larger groups as well, because knowing what limitations people have when they're at the table is also as beneficial as knowing the resources that they can contribute. So, we don't typically allow, and I know that we talked about this, I don't typically allow a lot of Q and A back and forth between the council and people doing presentations, and it's just mostly an opportunity for people to present information, the council take it in, and then if they want more information or details to be able to connect with folks. But because this has been such a flashpoint of an issue in our community, considering what happened with Churches United last fall, I will allow the opportunity for a few questions to be asked, if council members have any. So, any questions or comments by council members? Councilmember Mattson.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Is, do we have any sense, and this, this might be too far afield, and please tell me, you'll tell me later if it is, but do we have any sense, I guess, well, first part is, how, how much funding for the system, wherever geographically it lives, comes through from the federal government to either a state or municipality or whatever? That's number one. And then number two, do we have any sense of how impacts to, cuts to transit services might have some impacts on people experiencing homelessness? Not, not in the sense of people that are currently experiencing homelessness, but like creek conditions for people to find themselves experiencing homelessness who currently don't have that issue because they have transit?
Yeah, those are great questions, and I think we know that there are a variety of agencies throughout our community who will be impacted by any federal cuts to housing and homeless-related services. That being said, we also know that kind of, given our regional, just nature, we do not receive the type of infusion of resources that other communities across the nation see. And so for many years, it has been actually fundraising that organizations do on their own that does supplement many of their budgets. So, some agencies certainly have a predominantly federal or state funding that they utilize, but oftentimes, agencies are doing their own fundraising and, and development in order to, to be able to serve the population that needs them. And so we are, what we know is that our community is really invested in solving this issue on a regional level, and so we are really seeking to optimize whatever federal funding will remain as we see how this moves forward, as well as maximizing state dollars, that public-private partnership that we are really trying to develop by having that buy-in from other local stakeholders who have the financial resources to support this work just can unlock a little bit more funding, or can, it can help those dollars go further. So we're analyzing the impacts of all of that, and agencies have been pretty candid with us if they're facing any specific challenges, but right now, we are moving forward, kind of status quo with that, knowing that we need an infusion of resources in general to meet demand. And so if those federal funds go away, it will just be more so. And of course, when you're speaking about transportation, I mean, kind of anything in a community that can disrupt somebody's ability to access services is of course a challenge. However, I would say that's not necessarily inherently new to our region either. I think that's something that we've always struggled with, but agencies also work really creatively to collaborate on the transportation resources that do exist. And so there are so many different factors that can kind of put a, a community, or a family, or a household, in a situation that could put them at risk of homelessness, and all of those factors have a role to play. So that's kind of my general answer to a very big question.
Thank you. Councilmember Niesemeyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to sincerely appreciate both of you coming and sharing just a brief highlight into the magic that you do. I had a couple of follow-up questions to your presentation. I, as many as others, probably were shocked to see the numbers, as, you know, over 1,000 people in our community a night are homeless. And so I am curious, when you talk about our region, what does that mean? So people can have like a scope of, is it the metro area, like Fargo, West Fargo, Morehead, and just sort of to get a better grasp? sort of to get a better grasp of the, the number of folks who, like you said, it's not, you're just a Morehead or a Minnesota resident, you're not just a Fargo or a North Dakota resident, that it's more complicated than that. And so we have to collaboratively work together. And so just to get, you know, scope on, you know, those students, are they just K-12 students? And are they throughout the metro area? Or just a better feel for the individuals impacted? My second question is, how will we, where can we find more information? You said like, this was like dipping the toe, like just a taste for big things to come. Where can people find out more information about the good work that is being done and how they can help be supportive, be impactful? Because Chandler, you're completely right. Our community is really close-knit and really interested in being part of the solution. So.
Absolutely. So that number, 1,050, is representative of the Fargo-Morehead metro area. And that is a number that we have used, that we have analyzed over the past several years. That, that remains actually kind of consistent despite the fact that we've seen this increase, which is a little, kind of doesn't make sense necessarily. But that means that we're seeing people kind of move through the system, right? So that's just on any given night. The 600 students are the metro area as well. Do you have, yeah?
Yeah, I'd love to share. So one of the things that's unique about the, the data about students experiencing homelessness is in that, that count of 1,050, one of the, one of the challenging things about that number is it doesn't necessarily capture those who are doubled up, who might be relying on a non-permanent or temporary situation. Whereas that number around students comes directly from our metro schools who are serving homeless students right now, regardless of their specific definition of homelessness, if they're in a shelter, or if they're doubled up, or if they're in an unsafe situation. And about half of that 600 are from the Morehead side of, of our public schools.
Thank you. That was very helpful.
And then to answer your second question about where can people learn more, we have a really incredible, robust website hosted by United Way about the United to End Homelessness initiative. We have a whole host of data on there, a lot of other information that we've shared in various other settings that people can find and access. It's also where our fundraising link is located. And then as always, the Coalition website has a ton of information about the work of the Coalition, the state of homelessness in our community. And I always encourage folks to sign up for our Coalition newsletter. It comes out weekly. We tend to share a lot of good information, both with people who are working in homelessness and people who are concerned about it. So would welcome participation that way from the public as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you so much Chandler and Taylor. Just really appreciate the, the work that you guys do in the community, the coordination and the collaboration that you model every single day, and just the sheer grit and resilience that you, you demonstrate. So thanks for coming tonight, and I hope that people sign up. I get the homeless coalition email, and you guys do have a lot of great information in there.
Thank you so much.
All right. Moving on to the approval of the March 10th, 2025 meeting minutes, who have motion to approve?
So moved Nelson.
Second?
Second, Mattson.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Niesemeyer?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
McDougal?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Mattson.
Right, that motion approves or passes. Are there any citizens in the audience who wish to address the council at this time? And if you, yep, and if you do, please feel free to come up. If you haven't filled out the form, you can do that after you speak. Oh, during the public hearing? Okay, never mind. We'll wait. Other citizens in the audience who wish to address the council outside of the public hearing in regards to the items on the agenda. Seeing none. Moving on to our public hearing. First one, I will have turn this one over to Mr. Clay Lexon from our engineering department. But first, I will need a motion to open the public hearing for River Drive South, 18th Avenue South, Third Street South, and M Street South Underground Utility and Street Improvements.
So moved Niesemeyer?
So moved Deb White.
Second by White.
You can pick whichever one you want for the motion and whichever one you want for the second, because they both, kind of said both. So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
McDougal?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Niesemeyer?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Right, that motion carries, and we are in the public hearing, or the open public hearing portion of this agenda item. And I'll turn it over to you, Clay.
Thank you very much, Mayor. All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is the public hearing for Underground Utility and Street Improvements. This is Project 25A203. This includes Elm Street South, portions of River Drive South, 18th Avenue South, and Third Street South. This project will consist of street improvements, pavement improvements, spot curb and gutter, and sidewalk repairs, and some cast iron water main replacement. These streets were originally constructed between 1955 and 1961. There have not been any major street projects on them since. The streets are generally in poor condition and require a rehab. The pavement condition index, or PCI, has a low range of 17 to 48. There is sidewalk throughout the project area with no gaps. However, most ADA pedestrian ramps in the area are non-compliant. For utilities, the storm sewer is in acceptable condition. The majority of the sanitary sewer is vitrified clay pipe, but it's been lined and is in acceptable working condition. All the water main in the area is PVC except for River Drive South, which is cast iron and will be replaced as a part of this project. The proposed pavement include, improvements include the rehab of all streets in the project area. A rehab includes removing and replacing the entire pavement section, but the curb and gutter largely stays in place except for spot repairs. No sidewalk or no new sidewalk is proposed, but spot repairs will be needed on the existing sidewalk. Most of the pedestrian ramps in the area are non-compliant, like I mentioned, so we will update those as we come through. As I mentioned, on River Drive South, there is old cast iron water main that will be replaced with new PVC water main. And the city is partnering with MPS to do that work under this contract. There's approximately 13,000 feet of water main that will be replaced. Lastly, Excel Energy will be replacing gas mains on all streets in the project area. As a reminder, Excel Energy's project is not part of a city project, but it will be happening at approximately the same time. This is a map of the assessment area. There are no collector streets in this project, so there's only one rate, which is the rehab rate, which is $90 a front foot. There will be an assessment hearing later this fall. So to note, there, the assessments are proposed assessments. At this time, they're not finalized until later this fall. If residents have questions about assessments, amounts, how to pay, we'd encourage them to contact the city's special, special assessment coordinator. That number is listed here. It's also in the letter with the public hearing notice. And residents can also contact the engineering department directly, and we can get them in contact with the right person. There are a total of 41 properties within the assessment area. The total amount being assessed is approximately $342,000. The average assessment is about $8,300, and the maximum assessment is a little over $30,000. And that is the city property that is Elm Park. We received bids for this project on March 12th. The total project cost is expected to be about 1.52 million. That includes construction, contingencies, testing, and fees. On the funding side, the city share of that cost is approximately $866,000. Assessments are approximately $342,000, and the MPS share is estimated to be approximately $314,000. An informational video was posted to the city's website on February 14th. As of today, there were 41 views of that presentation, and we have received four different questions from the public since that video, or since this project was started. Those projects, or those questions pertained to construction duration, to scheduling, and a number of questions related to access during construction. The public hearing notice was mailed on March 13th. There have been two questions as of today related to assessments from residents. For the schedule, construction is expected for May through September, and then the assessment hearing would be later this fall. And then tonight, after the closure of the public meeting, we're asking for a, for you to consider a resolution to order the improvements and/or the bid. That's the end of my presentation. You have any questions?
Thank you very much. Ma'am, I believe that you wanted to speak during the public hearing portion of this item. So if you want to come up to the podium, come right up there, and you'll need to state your name, and if you are a Morehead resident, and then you can go ahead with your question.
Well, good evening. My name is Cheryl Walkenheim, and I'm a Morehead resident. I live in Ward Three. So are they electronically participating?
One of them is attending virtually, and one of them is not available tonight.
Okay. So my, my public comments will be much shorter if I can ask him a question real quick.
Go ahead.
So my understanding is that the water main project is not being paid for by the, by the residents? And the public park areas, the frontage is being paid for separately by the city? Okay. Excellent. Okay. So great. So all I want to say is when you award, you have to award it to somebody. It takes away my assessment issues. But those of you that live in South Morehead, you've experienced, we had, two summers ago, we had north of 12th Street South, we had a lot along the river, we had a lot, a lot of streets being, being rehabbed or I'm not sure what they were doing. And we also had a section this past summer that was in East-West Street, just about two blocks, right by the water tower. Both of those projects closed off those areas from essentially, I, I think about May, I didn't write the dates down until just before the snowflied. In fact, I think the snow was going when they were finally putting things down. So I'm concerned about accessibility. I live on one of these streets. Almost no activity the entire summer. They would come out and do their stuff, right? I know they, they go around the city and they do this, and they do it here and there. But it didn't appear that there was much accountability in the contract. The contract said you must finish by this date. And I, I might, I don't have any knowledge of this, but my observation is that there's not much accountability in terms of making the projects convenient for residents. And when I mean convenient, I mean simply able to access the streets. And that east-west, those two blocks, I don't know what they were doing, but you could not drive north-south, you could not drive north from 12th Avenue to Main Street. You could not drive north except the road along the river and all the way out to Eighth, Eighth Street. So there's no, like, on one week or two-week period when your street is inaccessible. So what I would like to do is have some accountability to the engineering firm so that the street is only closed during the time period at which they're actually working on the street. And, and it means a lot more than you can possibly imagine, those of you who had construction on your street. So it's not just convenience. So I would appreciate some discussions with the engineering firm about that. That's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Yeah, we don't really do Q and A back and forth with the individuals who are speaking. It's just an opportunity for you to express your thoughts and opinions to the council. But when we close the public hearing, I will ask engineering, because there are different reasons as to why it might look like they're not working on the road. And we have three of our, really, a lot of our engineering staff here tonight.
I have, I've been in discussion with them, and unfortunately, I have to, I have to go home with my children soon. But I, he has reached out to me, and I've made my, my concerns known, and they have been responsive. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Are there any other members of the public who would like to make a statement at this time? Seeing none, I'd be looking for a motion to close the public hearing portion of this item.
So moved Nelson.
Second, Mattson.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mattson?
Yes.
Niesemeyer?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
McDougal?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Right, that motion carries. We, the public hearing is now closed, and I'm not sure, Clay, if you want to respond to the questions regarding engineering contracts and length of time, and when they're able to work and not work, and why we close off so many blocks or not, or if Tom or Bob would like to do that. You guys need paper, rock, scissors?
We'd be happy to follow up with the resident to afterwards. We do have a lot of us here tonight. Be happy to do that. Generally, with street improvement projects, when we're doing pavement work and utility work, it's generally not, I, I wouldn't say impossible, but generally our, our duration for having that street torn up to the place where, to the point where it's not accessible for vehicles, that's usually at, at least a month. There's a number of things, too, that can attribute to that being delayed. I'd say there's also mechanisms, mechanisms within that contract that allow us to, you know, help that contractor finish that, that on time. If they go, go beyond our completion date, too, we do have other measures such as liquidated damages that we can apply. Always do that, but we can apply. So, but we'd be happy to follow up afterwards, too, if Cheryl would like to stick around.
That would be great. And I know that sometimes with engineering firms, they have staff, and sometimes they're pulling the staff to go do a bigger project somewhere, and then they bring them back. And there's a variety of reasons. But I also can't, I can certainly understand your frustration with not having access for a summer. It's trying to balance all of those different things. Councilmember White, you have your hand raised. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just wanted to thank the resident for speaking, and it's always best to contact staff directly, but I'm one of your Ward Three council members, and if you, it can ever be of assistance, feel free to contact me. I have three questions for our engineering staff. The first two are related, so let me start with those. One is that the section on Elm between 12th and 14th is part of the Midtown Trail. And so that is a section of the Midtown Trail that actually follows the road. And so one is, I was wondering, will we be able to, will we make, make sure that we put out notifications also with the trail system so that people know that they, that section of trail won't be accessible? And then related to that, when, I know when we were finishing the Midtown Trail, one of the places where we had to cut back a little bit was we weren't able to put wide, the wide bike ped lanes in, and I think that was one of the areas. So I'm, I don't know if we talked about that at all in this case. It sounds like we're not able to do that still. We're just going to keep the existing sidewalks. So I'll let you answer this, and then I have one other question about the cul-de-sac.
So for bike path access, Deb, I apologize. I don't know if we'll be closing down that section or not, but I'll be happy to look into it and then follow up with you directly afterwards, if that's okay.
Sure.
Generally, if we have to close down a section of the street, we'll, we'll detour around that. That, that, that's a really good question. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
And my other question? Oh, go ahead.
Oh, for the, for the section of street that's being improved, we're, we're not planning to extend the bike path along any of these other areas where it's not currently at.
Okay. And then my other question, that cul-de-sac, because that will have construction on the cul-de-sac, and then we'll have it on Elm, north of it, and then to the south. So where will those folk, will they have, it sounds to me like they won't have access to their driveways. Do we have an idea for how long? And for them in particular, where will they be able to park? Because they'll also then be, to the east would be Elm Park, our Elm Park, too. Because they'll also then be, to the east would be Elm Park, our Elm Park, too. And so it seems to me there'd be really limited opportunities for them to even find a place to park that's anywhere near their house.
I think the best way to deal with that situation is that we would phase that cul-de-sac area differently from the street right next to it. And so while the cul-de-sac area is under construction, the street immediately adjacent to it would be open and accessible. And so they would, they'd be able to park, you know, as closely as we possibly could get them in that situation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Niesemeyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Clay, I was hoping you could provide the answers while you're next to the microphone that you provided to the resident. I think that was really important information that people may be interested in. I believe it was, who is paying for the cast iron pipe and who is paying for the street and sidewalk improvements, I think.
Yeah. So this project's done jointly with Moorhead Public Service. They have a cost share in that project, so they will pay for all the work related to the water main replacement. That's approximately $314,000 or $15,000, so Moorhead Public Service has that cost share. And then the city will pick up for the work adjacent to the park. The city assesses that park property.
Marvelous. Thank you. My follow-up question, in the packet, it specifically says the remaining project cost will be financed through the PIR fund, and I didn't see that defined elsewhere in the agenda. I often get acronyms incorrect, and I feel like we have an opportunity to not only share the workings of the world, but also share some acronyms with residents if they are reading the packet. Do you have any, can you define PIR and the PIR fund for residents?
Tom, do you mind taking this one?
Yeah, the PIR fund is the Permanent Improvement Revolving Fund. So every time we bond for projects, it goes into the revolving fund, and it's used to pay construction costs. So, yes.
Marvelous. Thank you. My last question is a follow-up question in regards to access. You had said the curb cutouts are not up to code or...
The ADA ramps.
ADA, yes, thank you. Is there a process in which, while the road is torn up, people still have access to gaining parking in other streets and/or sidewalk access to their homes? Or is it, we tear all one spot up at once, and we just hope for the best, and then they have access to it? So if we could talk just a tesh about that, I would appreciate it.
Sure. When we move into a street project area, we'll generally maintain access for residents either through their driveway or through the sidewalk. So, for example, if the pavement is out, and they're not able to bring a vehicle into that street, the sidewalk, there would be a public access route along where the sidewalk is. And vice versa. If the sidewalk is out, there would be access maintained through the driveway.
Marvelous. Thank you.
Seeing no other council members with questions, I would entertain a motion to approve 9B and C.
So move Niesemeyer.
White, second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mattson?
Yes.
Niesemeyer?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
McDougal?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Aye.
All right. That motion carries. Moving on to the second public hearing of the night, looking for a motion to open the public hearing for 9th Avenue South, 10th Avenue South, and 16th Street South area street improvements.
So move Hendrickson.
Second, Moore.
Motion by Nelson, second by Moore. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
McDougal?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Niesemeyer?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Right. That motion carries, and we are in public hearing now, and I will turn it over to Mr. Tom Trowbridge.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. We have a public hearing presentation to bring up here. This is the public hearing for the 9th Avenue South, 10th Avenue South, and 16th Street South area street improvements, engineering project number 25-A2-01. And this project, then, is in the area just south of MSUM and north of 12th Avenue South. And the streets in this area were originally constructed in the late 1950s. The pavement condition index, or PCI, values range from 35 to 67 out of 100. Most of them were well below 50, so worthy of the rehabilitation. And the sidewalks are, they're continuous in this area, so we don't have gaps, but like the other project that Clay presented on today, most of the pedestrian curb ramps are not compliant with the current ADA standards. Those were updated in the early 2000s, and so the conditions, the requirements for those were changed significantly at that time. And then in addition to that, so this area, the utilities were also installed generally in the late 50s, most of them. So the sanitary sewer is, it was a vitrified clay pipe. Most of it's been lined with CIPP, which is a cured-in-place pipe. So that's like a PVC liner that goes inside the pipe, and we can do that without digging the streets up. So that's a nice option to have for the sewer rehabilitation. The storm sewer was all installed in the 50s, and that's a reinforced concrete pipe. That's generally an acceptable condition. And then the water main has a mix of some different types of pipe, and so we really need to replace the cast iron pipe. That's the pipe that can corrode. The types of clay soils we have are corrosive to iron, and as a result, that pipe deteriorates, and we start getting water main breaks. And so it's time to replace those pipes. So the proposed improvements are a bituminous rehabilitation, so it would be full replacement of the pavement and the gravel underneath it. But we're going to try to keep as much of the curb and gutter as we can, and just do minor spot repairs. And that's really only going to be if the drainage is so bad that the water's coming out onto the pavement. Just because the curb holds a little bit of water, that's not a problem to us, as long as it's not bonding on the pavement. And then the sidewalks, again, are generally acceptable. We can do minor repairs to those, but the curb ramps just don't meet current standards, and those need to be replaced. And then the water main is going to be replaced by Moorhead Public Service. So that is not technically part of the project we're doing, but it will be done concurrent with it. And so Moorhead Public Service has their own crew that can replace water main. They just can't do as many water mains as there are in the streets we're doing. So sometimes we hire it in our contract, sometimes they do it concurrent with our work, and that's what will happen this time, is Moorhead Public Service will do that themselves. And that's only, the only water main that needed to be done was on 10th Avenue and on 16th Street. The piece on 9th Avenue had been replaced, or is actually a different type of pipe that doesn't need to be replaced. Sorry. Sanitary sewer, at this time, there are no improvements we need to do. And similar to the other project and other projects in the past few years, Excel Energy is replacing, they also have some metal pipe gas mains, and those also are susceptible to corrosion. And so they are replacing those as well. And they're going to do that outside of our contract, but concurrent with it. So hopefully, when everything is all done, we get things restored to our standards. So the project will be assessed, and if we assess the way our current policy is, is we assess a fee based on the front footage, and that fee is designed to gain, or to recover about 30% plus or minus of the project cost. It will vary based on, sometimes projects cost more or less, but this fee will basically be consistent. So everybody citywide really pays the same thing based on the type of project they're getting. And so for rehab, that assessment rate is $90 per front foot. So if you have a 50-foot lot, you would have a $4,500 assessment. And then, of course, that's the rate that the council has adopted. This hearing tonight is only to order the project. We actually have to have a separate hearing after the project is done. That should happen this fall, and that is the assessment hearing. And at that time, nothing should change on the total assessment. Even if the project cost goes up or down, the assessment should stay the same. But that assessment hearing will be held this fall, so people don't have to pay something now, but if they don't pay off their assessment or a portion of it, anything not paid by November 15th goes on the assessment roll and gets paid over a period of 20 years, and that has interest. If they pay something before November 15th, there's no interest on that. Anybody that has questions on the assessment process, we strongly encourage them to call our special assessment coordinator, Amy. Her number is there, 218-299-5427. She's very good at explaining the entire process and answering any questions that people might have. So as I talked about proposed assessments a bit, there are 39 properties that are going to be assessed for this project. The total amount is about $370,000. So the average assessment is $9,500. The minimum assessment was $3,684. Median is $6,750. The maximum assessment was $60,939. I believe that was on, so this project borders on Moorhead State University, or Minnesota State, Moorhead. Showing my age there. But they've got some parking lots and properties at about 9th Avenue South, and so that would be the largest assessment. There's also another large business property that used to be the Edison School and another building north of that, that has a large amount of frontage. But the residential properties assessments were much less than that. So the total project cost is $1.29 million, basically, and I would note, this does not include the water main now, because MPS is doing that separate from this contract. So that's not included in that cost at all. The assessment, then, is 29% of the total project cost, and then the rest of it is paid by the city. The city would pay off its share through the general property tax levy. So the public input to date, the city had an informational presentation that was posted in the middle of February. It has had 24 views as of late last week. I neglected to check on that today to see if it had any more. And in response to that, there'd been one inquiry with questions on proposed assessments. We also mailed out the public hearing notice on March 13th, and we have not received any comments on that through the end of today. Project schedule, this project started when we ordered the report last December, and then the report was received in January, plans were approved. We received bids March 19th, and the bids were good, and we would like to be able to proceed with the project then. If the improvements are ordered today, work should start in May and be completed in September. And then we would hold the assessment hearing September or October. So the public hearing tonight, the intent is to receive public comment specifically with guidance to the council on whether or not to proceed with the project as proposed. And so upon closing the public hearing, we would ask that you consider a resolution to order the improvements. By state statute, that resolution has to be passed by 80% of the full council, which comes to seven votes. So we would need all seven members tonight to vote in favor of ordering the improvements. Then following the ordering of the improvements, we would ask that you award the bid, and the award of the bid requires six votes per the city charter. So if you have any, that's all I have for the public hearing presentation.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate that. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this agenda item? Again, any members of the public wish to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, would be looking for a motion to close the public hearing portion of this item.
So move Mattson.
Is there a second?
Niesemeyer, second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those, well, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
McDougal?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Niesemeyer?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Right. That motion carries, and the public hearing is now closed. Any questions for Tom? And if no questions, would be looking for a motion to approve 9E and F.
White moves to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, further questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Niesemeyer?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
McDougal?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
All right. And then 13D was on consent, so that was approved, correct? Okay. All right. We are now on to mayor and council reports. Are there any council members who have reports on boards or committees, activities that you've done on behalf of the city that you'd like to report to your fellow council members? Councilmember Mattson.
Thank you, Mayor. Attended MetroCog Policy Board meeting, I think that was last week. I wouldn't say that there's any firm information on federal funding status, but I think it's fair to say that what we should anticipate, be prepared for cuts to federal funding to transit. No idea how much, or, you know, what kind of specific cuts, but that seems to be the sentiment. I was invited to attend last night's IFRS dinner. I would like to thank Kanye Don, Falzia Adi, Siham Ahmed, and Ahmed McCran for the invitation. It was a lovely celebration of community and togetherness. It was very nice. Nice to spend time with some new friends and some previous friends, so thank you for the invitation. I also attended this weekend, the Attorney General was in town for some events. He held a public town hall. That was an official event. It was not a campaign or a partisan event. It was official visit, open to everyone to ask questions. And I would say, one thing that I took from that meeting is that, you know, he has filed some lawsuits based on the recent executive orders, and the reason that he has filed those suits is that Minnesotans have contacted his office and said that they have experienced harm directly as a result of those, some of those executive orders. And so that's how he's able to file the suit, is because a Minnesotan has been impacted. So if you're a Minnesotan who has been impacted by an executive order, please contact the Attorney General's office and let him know, and they will, you know, get the information from you that they need to proceed if they determine that they need to do that. He also held a couple of private meetings with some vulnerable communities. I'm not going to talk about what happened in those, but I will say, one of the key things that I took out of that, the latest, the last meeting he had, was, you know, we say the Pledge of Allegiance, and we say with liberty and justice for all, and his point of view, and it's one that I share, is that all means all. If it doesn't mean all, then it doesn't mean really anything. And so we really, it's incumbent upon all of us to stand up for everyone's rights all of the time. So that was meetings with the Attorney General. And then upcoming, in a couple of weeks, on April 5th, is the Woodlands and High Plains Powwow. It's at Concordia this year. I believe it starts at noon with grand entry at 1:00 and 7:00. They do still need some volunteers, so if you're interested in volunteering, please can contact me, and I will get you the signup link. Thank you.
Councilmember Niesemeyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, Councilmember Mattson beat me to my IFRS. Thank you. I will encourage community members to remember that Ramadan is an annual event. It changes the season and month in which it is observed, and the community IFRS event, which we have each and every year, and it changes metro location. And so look for that. Mark your calendars next year, and if you weren't able to join us, make note, and try to join us next year, because it is a truly inclusive and open-to-everybody environment. I also want to highlight that it is Kurdish Heritage Month, and our Clay County Historical Society has a wonderful exhibit that highlights our Kurdish culture and Kurdish community members and our history here. So if you haven't had a chance to pop out, please continue to do that, because that is currently in our museum. is currently in our museum, and so it's a great thing. From my participation in the recent Cast Clay Food Partners event, the backyard chicken blueprint was recently updated. I also want to highlight how awesome the city of Morehead is. We were well-accolated for our community outreach and connection to our strategic plan in how we have improved a number of ordinances and access to foodstuffs. And so look for events. The Cast Clay Food Partners is celebrating their 10th anniversary, and so we are currently planning some shindigs or two. And so look for those items on our website.
Thank you. Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor, and I will repeat some of the things that have already been said. I will express my gratitude as well for the hosts who put on the Iftar last night in Morehead. It was a wonderful event and so welcoming. I was honored to be a part of that. I wanted to wish happy Navruz to our Kurdish community members. I know they'll be having a celebration at the Fargo Dome on April 12th, even though Navruz just happened. And I wanted to take a minute to thank Seham Ahmed, who we know through so many different things in our community, she just finished up as our Chair of the Human Rights Commission, but she also just participated in a program that West Central Initiative has. It's called Love Letters to Your City, and you can write about your city, and she wrote about Morehead, and it was picked, and so the city of Morehead will be receiving a donation on her behalf. So just wanted to say thank you to her for that and for all of the wonderful things that she does in our community. It's people like her that make Morehead such a great place. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hendrickson.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a chance to go to a retreat for the Red River Basin Commission on 5th of March, and then a board meeting on the 6th, and talked about the Red River Basin from Fargo to Winnipeg, and how we need to keep it healthy and keep the waterways healthy, and a lot of flood protection. And as Commissioner Dave Pepcorn for Fargo, we emphasize that we need, the FM diversion needs funding, and we need funding in Morehead, so we emphasize that over and over again. And at the board meeting, we had the honor of having Executive Director Benson speak on behalf of the FM diversion. So it was a good meeting. All in all, it was, the drive up to Grand Forks was boring, but, you know, what do you expect? And then I attended a preparing Greater Minnesota Communities for Extreme Weather at Thumper Pond in Ottertail, Minnesota, and it was interesting to hear these rural cities talk about, you know, all the shelters they need to build and what they do in case of extreme weather events. I think we're lucky in Morehead, we have a lot of colleges here, we have a lot of places we can go to house people if we ever do run into an extreme weather event. But it was interesting to hear them talk about their processes and the way they take steps in protecting their citizens. And they're small towns, too. I think, well, Morehead was the biggest, and I think the smallest was about 200, so... But all in all, it was a very good meeting, and it was a nice drive that day, too, so thanks.
Thank you. Any other council members have reports? All right, seeing none. So for the mayor update, some of the events I have done on behalf of the city, I'm participating in a Strategic Planning Committee Task Force for the YMCA. I am also participating with members from Clay County and folks from the chamber, and also from the Metro Flood Diversion Authority. We are doing weekly check-ins on flood mitigation lobbying work that we're doing to obtain the needed funding that we need for flood mitigation. So there's been a number of check-ins a little bit more lately, because there was a capital investment committee on the House side where Clay County Commissioner Omojo, myself, and Executive Director Jason Benson, and Rep. Keeler, and Rep. Joy all testified on behalf of our request for the $60 million flood work that needs to be done on the Minnesota side for the Metro Flood Diversion. I was able to, and I was excited to be able to swear in three new police officers that Morehead has now through the IC Poet Grant. Those individuals are now in their FTO program or their field training program, so hopefully in a couple of months, we will have three new officers that are going to be able to be out on the street by themselves. And there was a meeting on March 12th for the Diversion Authority Planning Committee. One of the things that we are getting asked about, as we're getting closer to having the flood diversion project complete, is about FEMA. And with the FEMA update, they have been meeting for several years already. They are having ongoing discussions still with local, state, and federal representatives based on the CLOMAR, which set the initial boundaries, and CLOMAR is Conditional Letter of Mapping Revision. I actually got that right. So the CLOMAR, still ongoing discussions about that, and determining if a physical map revision versus a LOMAR will be done. And I think that'll be based on the modeling. Is that correct? I'm looking at our city engineer who's nodding his head. He knows way more about that than I do. But it is interesting, the different hoops that FEMA has to jump through and to make it even more complicated. Minnesota is in one FEMA district, North Dakota's in a different FEMA district, and with the project being two different states, you have two different districts that are needing to work together. So it's very complicated, and hopefully by 2030, the mapping will be redone, and we'll have a new update from FEMA, and people will not have to pay for flood insurance. We're also starting to have some global program O&amp;M discussions for the diversion. The city would be obviously responsible for the mowing, control structures, et cetera, things like that, but the county is talking about possibly creating a district which would not include the city of Morehead, and figuring out a way to fund their operation and maintenance for the projects that are in the county. Also, there is a strategic asset management plan that the new executive director is starting to develop, called a SAMP. And with those timelines, it's when different portions of the project get turned over to the Metro Flood Diversion. That transition, there's going to be so many of them occurring, so determining if the staff of the Metro Flood Diversion Authority would be managing those assets or if it would be contracted. So just a lot of discussion at the planning committee that was held on March 12th. And I was able to present to the Kiwanis Club with former Mayor Mac Vaxton to talk about our community center library and some of the other ongoing projects that are happening in the city of Morehead. And last but not least, I think that there were a number of us who also participated in the beam signing, so wanted to thank the city staff who put that together, because it might look like it's simple, people just, you know, show up, but there's a lot of planning that goes into creating an event like that. And I know that for the six hours that they were there, there were a lot of people that were coming and signing the beam, and then fast forward to the next week where there was the beam raising or placement, which there were a number of people there as well. And it is kind of putting that last puzzle piece together in our structure, so it's exciting to see that. And then last but not least, I signed a proclamation declaring March 2025 Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month, and the individuals that requested that proclamation came in to get a photo so that they can start doing some informational, educational marketing around that. And that is all I have. So, City Manager Molly, do you have any updates?
No updates tonight, Mayor.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Hendrickson.
Thanks. I just, I forgot to mention that Greater Minnesota Community Extreme Weather was provided by West Central Initiative in Fergus Falls, so... And I got to see an old friend, Ben Shire, the old mayor of Fergus Falls, so hey, Ben, I don't know if you're watching, but...
It's Ian.
All right, thank you. And next, I will be looking for a motion to go into closed executive session pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D dot oh five subdivision three, print B, for attorney-client consultation with external litigation counsel in the matters of Ames Construction, Inc. versus the city of Morehead. A motion to go into closed session.
So moved Niesemeyer.
Second, Nelson.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Hendrickson.
Yes.
McDougal.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Niesemeyer.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Right, that motion carries. We are in executive session.
All right, that motion carries. We are in executive session.
Hello, hello. There we go. And we are back from executive session. Do I have a motion to close the executive session?
So move Niesemeyer.
Second Nelson.
A motion and a second. We'll call vote. Please.
Aye.
Mattson?
Yes.
Niesemeyer?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
White? Oh, she's still connecting, sorry. And Sebastian. Hendrickson?
Yes.
All right. Well, that motion carries. So we are closed, the executive session is closed. And with that, we don't have any new business. And we are adjourned. So, good night, more head.